Sir.
Okay. Welcome to the December 2nd Selectmen's Meeting. Kim will be without us tonight. Stand for the pledge.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're down to Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
All right, so the first thing that I want to talk with you guys about is the transfer station. You'll see the note that you have at the top of your packets. This is something that Bob and I drafted together. This is something that he's asking for. He would like your approval before we start copying and sending it out. So if we can just go through it. So effective January 1st, 2021, you will not be able to use the transfer station without a valid sticker. Stickers are available at the transfer station or at the town clerk's office. Also available are temporary permits and rental permits. Temporary permits are free of charge and expire 14 days from the date issued. These are designed for family members who may visit the property for a short period of time. Rental permits are $25 each and are designed for tenants of any rental in Acton and expire at the end of each calendar year. Over the next couple of weeks, Acton property owners without a transfer station will be reminded that they need to obtain one as soon as possible. We appreciate your cooperation. So new in that paragraph is Bob's friendly plea with a nice smile, asking us to start helping him give out transfer stations, the stickers at the clerk's office. It's something that we did up until probably three or four years ago, and then it's something that we kind of moved and delegated over to the transfer station. He's asked that we help alleviate some of the bog down there from issuing stickers. So I agreed. So at registration time, we're trying to give them out now. We've got the 2021 stickers in. So the other thing, if you look at the second piece in your packet, this is a copy of what already exists, so I want to make sure the board understands that this rental permit is nothing new. We probably sell six to 10 a year. They're fairly rare. Some of the real estate agents that do a lot of rentals will come in and buy them. It looks like a door hanger, and it looks similar to what you see in front of you. So that's nothing new. One of the conversations that he and I had were regarding the temporary permits. You know, my grandmother passed away, and I need to clean out her house, or I'm here staying with my brother for a week. So he came up with the temporary permit, the 14 days. So what we're in the process of doing is working out the seasonal permit that you see in front of you. We'll make some changes to it, and there'll be different colors, and one will be free, and then one will be seasonal based on rental. Assuming that the board is okay with that.
How many stickers can a person get if they own a piece of property? I mean, if at your house?
Yeah, as long as they can get one per vehicle that they own.
Okay. Now, how, if you're to be giving them out here and there, what's to stop someone from getting?
Well, the plate number is written on there, so really, a second sticker of the same vehicle doesn't do you a lot of good.
But if someone comes here on Friday and gets a sticker, and they go there on Saturday and gets one for the same car?
Right, so now you have two stickers with the same plate. So assuming they're checking to make sure that the stickers match, and that the license plate number that we're writing on the sticker matches, that second sticker doesn't do you any good.
Okay.
You know, unless, you know, if your plate is 1,000 MX, and you've got two of them, and you put the 1,000 MX on 3969 PQ, you know, and they should catch that.
Okay.
So really, a second sticker, do you know what I mean, where the plate number's written on it, shouldn't really do you any good. The only good that's going to do you is if they're not matching them up.
Yep.
So. Do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I'm just trying to figure a way that we could eliminate duplicate stickers, but if you know damn well, someone's going to do that.
Yeah, and one of the things they do in Chaplain, which we certainly can do, it would be a little added work at the transfer station, but they actually use a single hole punch, and they punch a hole in the actual registration. So when you come in to register your car, if you need a sticker, we're going to give you the sticker, and we're going to punch a hole in it. So when you go to the transfer station for that same vehicle, you should be showing your registration. Bob's going to say, oh, there's a hole in, no.
Yeah, if you approve your residence, so.
So, I mean, that's something that we could do.
That wouldn't be a bad idea, because you can't, you couldn't at Friday afternoon make a copy of what you've done here for the week and get it up to him for Saturday.
And we're not, we're not keeping records of what we're issuing. I mean, if you've got a valid sticker in front of you, I mean, as it is, it's an added step that we're writing it out and handing it out. We're certainly not keeping a log.
Yeah.
So let's order a couple of those single punches.
I think I'd get a punch that was something more than a circle.
Like a cow punch or something?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll surprise you.
Okay.
All right, so we'll get something like that and do that. All right, next item is just FYI that the Plan and Board Meeting has been canceled before this week, so the next meeting will be the third Thursday of the month. I think it's the 17th, somewhere around there, but this week's has been canceled. I got an email, and I've been corresponding with the superintendent, that the school has some Chromebooks that they're going to be redistributing. They do, by policy, offer them to the town first. So the idea, the question is, you know, do we have departments? Do we have libraries? Do we have some places that might be able to use some? They do have cameras built into them. For the ones that we don't need, they are going to turn around and sell them to staff, whether it be town staff, school staff, parents are going to be able to do them. I want to say the price out loud, because I'm not sure if he's announced that, but they are very, very reasonable. So he's setting a small aside, setting a small amount aside for us, but he really wants to start moving them. So just kind of a information for you, so that you know when you see the email going out to the staff department, see if anybody needs any.
We had an issue there with when we're doing the Zoom meetings. We can use those for Zoom.
Yeah, absolutely. They have built-in cameras, yeah.
We had a couple sitting aside just for the board.
Wouldn't be a bad idea. Yeah, have two or four sitting aside for people that don't have a computer for a Zoom meeting. They could come pick it up and...
Someone that's signing it out, yeah. We can get head counts from some of the committees and...
Yep.
So you guys are all set? As far as, you don't need one personally?
No.
Next is just a letter from three workers that came in. Not something I'm going to take the time to read. It's regarding concerns they have for the Martel Estates and the development, but just wanting to make sure that, because it was addressed to the Select Board and Planning Board, that it was on the record that you received it. Next item is from the York County Sheriff's Department. They have given us an update. This goes to Acton Ann Chaplain regarding contract town report. Apparently, they've got a new deputy chief, and he's going to be more diligent about sending us some quarterly reports, based on the email they sent me today. A couple of notable events you may be interested in. There was a stolen vehicle November 28th in Acton. Looked like it was tied to Wakefield, and eventually they were, was found and towed, so that's good. November 7th, violation of condition of release. Just checking, hopefully make sure they didn't put any names in here. They didn't. Something regarding, again, Acton, regarding a victim that was assaulted by a boyfriend and an arrest warrant. Looks like it's still in investigation. November 6th, operating after suspension. Seventy stopped a vehicle on Allen's Nest Road. Operator was identified as, he's got summons there. And then last notable, so this is monthly, not quarterly, my mistake. Seventy located and arrested. Oh, yes, this is a gentleman that was all over the internet. Gentleman in Chaplain that they had been looking for, for looting an officer, reckless conduct that was down in the Williams Park for a while. So anyways, you'll be seeing those. I think what is quarterly is this contract report. This is, we've got a combined Acton and Chaplain. I think that at town meeting, they generally separate it, don't they?
Yeah.
So we'll send them an email and ask them if he can separate it for us. Gives you the amount of calls, who initiated it, and how it was handled. So I think you've seen that before. Next item to go over with you is just a letter from Langley Shores Association. They just wanted to say, on behalf of Langley Shore Association, they wish to express their sincere appreciation and the consideration and approval of their erosion control road product, project. With the assistance of Article 43, it's helped them preserve the water quality of Great East. Of all the challenges the town faces, they wanted to say thank you. Signed by Stephen Greenham. We had a conversation regarding starting to have department head meetings. We talked about scheduling the first one in December, so I'm going to ask you when that might be and how far out. I'm assuming we're going to do the department heads in the building, department heads at the transfer station, and department heads at the fire station. So if there's a certain day of the week, I can communicate with Kim when she's better and get something scheduled. I know it's December, and it's weather permitting, but, you know, we've got to start, we've got to stay on top of this.
Later in the day is better for me, if I'm going to attend one.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, most time later on in the day.
Okay. So, I mean, this office closes at 4:00. Could you do it at 4:30?
Yeah, easily. I could probably do it at 4:00.
You could probably do it at 4:00. Can you do it at 4:00?
Yeah, I can do it at 4:00, yeah.
All right. Next one is a tax map data updated. Just to let you know that People's GIS reached out to us today and let us know that all the tax changes and map changes that were presented to them from Dennis has been done. So the website is officially up to date. Speaking of Dennis, I did have a nice conversation with John today, and he's actually coming home. Coming home, it looks like on Friday, they've made a lot of changes, put a wheelchair ramp in, and got a lot of challenges ahead of him, but he's coming home and hopefully doing better one day at a time. Later on in the agenda, you're going to see, the treasurer and I are going to talk to you about a draft budget timeline. I guess before, one of the notes that I had was to talk to you about a special town meeting. I mean, is it my understanding that as long as the governor has a 50-person rule, you do not have an intention of having a special town meeting?
I don't.
You don't, can't take a chance that 51 people are going to show up with 20...
That's the same problem we had last year.
2,300 voters, okay, even with a special. So we have, we know that the Land Use Department originally, when we were dealing with this a year ago, they had the zoning questions, and we had told them that, you know, we were hoping to do a special this summer or this fall. You know, that there were, you know, there was a couple of miscellaneous things that we took off the warrant that we talked about moving to a special. We have the petition, and we have the election of officers would have to be done at an open town meeting. So we just want to make sure we're contacting the right people with Warren Finance coming up and know what your intentions are, so.
Yeah, I don't think we can take a chance.
No, I think if we schedule on, it'd probably be for nothing at this point.
Yeah.
Sam, sorry?
Sorry about that. I said, schedule on, trying to schedule something right now and not knowing what's in the future, I don't think would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to talk about COVID a little further down, but, I mean, I'm comfortable saying that as of today, there are more Acton people with COVID today than there has been since this has started.
And there's more people being tested today than there was when it started?
Yeah, no, but I mean, we've got a lot, some sick residents.
Yep, yep.
So, all right, so no special town meeting, and we're just going to move forward, and all these items that were, I guess, taken off, we'll have to evaluate as we move forward.
There's nothing pressing, other than, well, we do have the election, you know, the...
Well, the election of officers, but they, under the governor's emergency order, anybody that expired June 30th is continuing until we can have a special town meeting, so that's fine.
There's nothing that we absolutely have to...
No, I mean, there are some zoning items that we took off that they would like to see voted on. The other items, we're just going to, we're going to wrap back on this year. There's the extra position, well, the not extra position, what was the position downstairs?
The planner.
The planner that we'll go back on. We'll just have to wrap them back around and decide, I mean, but if we can't have one, we can't have one.
Because we can't, we can't even do a ballot question, can we? Because some of those...
Yes. Well, so we could, well, you can't for the election of officers. Those have to stay open town meeting.
Yeah.
We can't change the format of vote that the Acton has approved, but like the petition for the assault.
The petition, we could. The zoning questions, we could.
Mm-hmm.
The planner, we could.
Well, we made a decision now that the petition was going to be at the next open town meet.
Right, right. That's right. Because that's what he requested, was open town meeting.
Exactly, so.
Because of the article, the wording he used, so, okay, yep.
Last item is just FYI that one of the WET committee members that you swore in has since decided that her schedule doesn't allow for it, so she's going to be withdrawing her name, so we'll just void her appointment and advertise that there's still a couple of, um, seats open on the WET. That's it, David.
All set?
All set.
Okay, you signed them, Bill?
I did.
Did, okay. Approval of the agenda, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Minutes of the last meeting.
All in favor?
You want to vote on it?
Oh, sorry about that. I thought we did.
No.
Take a vote?
Move to second.
Vote on it?
Yep, all in favor? All opposed? There you go.
Okay, a little rusty here, haven't done this in a while.
It's okay, we'll get you trained.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
That was what we just did.
Oh, minutes of the last meeting, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
November 18th. I'll second that. Prove. Okay, let's see here, department heads, community, committee chair updates. Any?
Yeah, so, oh, I got one item on the agenda first, if you don't mind. So the first one that we have listed there, because we knew about it in advance, I tried to put them on there. The treasurer had emailed some time ago, right around the time, unfortunately, of the passing of Mr. Letourneau, that there were, within the start of the new fiscal year, there were some questions we had to get answered as far as the employee independent contract and how they were paid. So she's here with the road commissioners to discuss that first.
Okay, so I don't know if you guys recall this. Occasionally, we have an independent contractor that is hired by the road commissioner that might be working, but they don't have a piece of equipment attached to them. They might be renting the equipment through Taylor Rental or Long Meadows or of the sorts. So we don't have a specific, we don't have a specific line item on that budget to pay them the operator rate. We have the labor, the general labor flagger rate of $18. I just want clarification from the board as to whether we're going to continue to just pay them that, where they're not attached to a piece of equipment, or if we were going to pay them at the 2701.
So you're saying, say, for example, say they rented an excavator from Taylor Rental, that's what you're talking about. Okay, so they're an operator.
They're an operator, but we're not paying them for the equipment. We're paying Taylor Rental for the equipment.
But that, it doesn't matter. It's no different than anybody else. If, you know, if Will uses a road commission, we've got Will here, okay? So we've got Will, it doesn't matter who owns the equipment. If he's an operator, he's an operator.
Right.
The equipment's going to get paid separately anyways.
Right.
So he should be getting paid the operator rate.
I think probably next year, we should separate that out so it's clear on the list. That's, that's what, there was only one instance of where that happened, but, and that's what I did, based on the, you know, air of caution.
I think that's fair.
But I just wanted to make sure, and...
Do you need a motion or anything on that, Michelle, for the minutes? Are you good?
What's that?
Do you need a motion or anything for the minutes? Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
And I know, we might have worked some of the bugs out already. I know at the time, Will had had some questions or some concerns about rates, labor rates, but we might have, it's been a while since this discussion was going to get brought up, and I don't know if Will has any more concerns, or Adam might have any more concerns about the process of something.
I'm still learning the process a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, Will was in it on the way it used to be, so it's probably easier for you, because that's what it is, yeah.
No, I'm all, I'm all.
You're good now.
Was a little bit me and you talking, I talked a bit, so I'm all set.
Yeah, okay. And I know it's further on down the agenda here, but on the same line as the road commissioner discussion, the money that was budgeted, and I think I've had this conversation with David, the money that was budgeted for that, the extra unemployment and workers' comp is still in general government, and the board will need to have an official vote to pay that, those, that percentage from general government, because we never moved it in case the article didn't pass at town meeting. Next year, we would take that money and move it to the roads and take it out of general government, so the board will have to make an official vote on that later on. And I have, I figured out, you know, to the penny, since July 1st, what each side comes up to. It's not a lot of money, but at the end of the year, you know, it could add up, and it could be a matter of whether they have the money to, you know, fix the washout or not, you know?
So you're talking about the unemployment, the FICA and all that stuff that's coming out of a general... See, I, honestly, when I was road commissioner, I was always under the impression it was always coming out of my account, I thought, and always, everything was bunched in each department.
Now, the only thing that has ever come out of there is the FICA and Social Security.
Yeah.
But the unemployment and everything comes, it's budgeted in general government.
So you're, we're going to, next year, we're going to put everything on to that?
Right, right. We'll figure out, you know, based on wages and whatnot history and...
When do you want to vote to move that?
Tonight, it's on your agenda.
Okay, good. So that's what I wanted to do, so.
That is on D.
Yeah, I got it down there.
Business.
All right, so we're good on that, Michelle?
Yep.
All right, Leslie, thank you.
Leslie Berlin, road committee chair. We had our meeting on Monday night, and we talked about several different things. Can you hear me now?
Give that a tap in. Yeah, it's on.
We talked, we reviewed the application for Article 43 on Tattle Street. All documents and requirements have been met. The road committee does approve, recommend approving the application, the amount of $3,000. I did take some time, and I contacted DEP and the Army Corps of Engineer regarding the permitting that we talked about with the West Shore Drive. I spoke with John McLean at DEP. He's the one that also handles all of the grants. He did say that there would be another round of grant money coming up, and he was hearing whispers of additional funds coming. So in referring to DEP's requirements, they require that we do not block fish passage. We utilize erosion control. The design installation has to meet the stream grade, and you have to embed any new structure one foot or 25% of the diameter, whichever is greater, up to a maximum of two foot.
Yep.
And he also said that the Army Corps would take the lead on resizing and quite a bit of the permitting. I then called Colin Greenan at the Army Corps of Engineer, and I summarized some of his statements. "The Army Corps regulates aquatic life. In-kind replacements are designed for small streams and brooks. To be able to do an in-kind replacement, you must be able to perform the work without drawing out the area. Fill cannot be added, and at this location, it would be challenging at best, if not impossible." And he looked up the culvert on his maps, so he, and he was aware of this location.
That would be replacing in-kind, you said?
In-kind.
Okay.
"The onus is on the town to demonstrate an in-kind replacement is the only alternative. Alternative analysis must be submitted to the Army Corps. Should be drawings and plans demonstrating that this is the only alternative. The town would also need to explain why an available funding stream was rejected, if we cited expenses as one of the reasons." He says that the bar is extremely high, and it is doubtful the town would be able to make its case.
The requirements haven't changed at all since we've done the one, the dam up there on Wilson Lake. It's the same thing. You have to embed the culverts and this and that. But he's saying what now? That you, you have to do...
You have to demonstrate that that is the only alternative.
I don't, so if, say, and funds could be an issue?
Funds could, yeah, if we use funds as an issue.
Yeah.
Then we're going to have to explain why we, why we turn down a possible revenue stream. So that's, that's what they're saying at this point.
That's who now? Is that the Army Corps of Engineer saying that?
It was the Army Corps of Engineer, yeah. And I spoke at length with him. I spoke with him several times before we finished writing up the grant, too.
And honestly, the reason, I think I pointed this out the last, the only reason that we did not, I voted not to go through with that, wasn't because of the stream crossing. I made it very clear that I don't care if the thing's five feet wide or 10 feet wide. We just have to go through the process, and the process was getting too close, too fast. And if they're saying there's more money coming, great, but we just have a couple steps we've got to take before we can go through that. And so I want to make that very clear, that I, that's the reason why I voted against doing that. That's the only reason. Now, at the town meeting, we're going to have to, and for the backlash that we've gotten there in the last couple of weeks, when that all came up, we're going to have to, you're going to have to, the town is going to have to have a very good reason why these people on West Shore Drive want to vote for that, okay? And we do have to have a secondary plan, because I have a feeling the amount of phone calls I got just within a two-hour period didn't look good. So that's, that's, but I just want to make that clear, that I have, I do understand where they're coming from and everything else.
I know, but there's more considerations than just both. There's safety considerations.
The considerations, I was worried about the landowners that have butted the bridge. That's the only, that's the only one I was worried about at that point in time.
We also spoke about canal bridge. The road committee, you know, we had quite a lively discussion, and we have a few questions for the, for the board. We wanted to know that if the selectmen are planning a meeting with the Wakefield selectmen.
I'm sorry, can you just, I'm trying to write it down. Can you just repeat that with the phone, because I didn't catch it?
I was talking, planning a meeting with the Wakefield selectmen.
Thank you.
We haven't claimed anything so far.
No, I mean, we met with that one selectman from Wakefield that...
The one that came to...
Yeah, he was the one that came here, yeah. I mean, I don't know if there's any reason to meet with their whole board, unless you have some ideas why.
Has a budget been deter, for the approach been determined?
I believe our road commission's working on that.
And according to our treasurer, there is $163,842.71 in District 2's paving and reconstruction budget. So we have, we do have the funds to move forward.
No, we don't have the funds. That was allocated for paving and reconstruction.
So Adam Kahn, with a selectman approval, decides to move forward for this.
We came up with this problem back in the day. Now, remember back in the day when I would say, okay, well, I got this much money here, I'll take it and put it over here, and we'll do some extra paving, do this and that, and that was a no-no. Now, you know, to throw this at Adam like that and say, okay, well, you've got the money, we'll just roll with it, that puts him in a hard spot this spring of paving his roads that, you know, need to be paved. Now, you might fix this problem, but I've heard this for 10 years now. We're behind on our paving, and blah, 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 okay? We've got a town meeting in June, right? Now, a town meeting in June, we can allocate the money. We're not going to do that bridge this winter.
Is he going to, is he going to spend this $163,000 before more money is allocated?
When he comes up, when he comes to us with a plan for springtime, we'll know that. But I don't believe as a selectboard member, I want to allocate his money to anything.
So there, at this point, there is no plan for spring work on...
I'm sure there is. I mean, we've gotten bids from Pike for paving and everything else, but he just got hired for this job, and I don't believe it's anybody's job except for our District 2 road commissioner to make sure that he can do what he needs to do, and it sounds like you spent his budget for him.
Offering this up as a possible alternative is what I'm, is what I'm saying. I'm not saying that he has to do this, I'm saying...
But at the same time, what I'm saying is, is you, but you've been doing the research, research, and you're saying there's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Sure, there's a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars there, okay? That'll pave about a couple miles of road, um, almost, but at the same time, what would that accomplish by saying he's got the money, 'cause we can't do the, we're not, it would be absolutely ludicrous to think it would be a good idea in January and February and March to go do that project when the roads are gonna be shut down in March, February, March, um, and April. Um, so you're only talking a couple of months before town meeting. I, I, I mean, we got meeting coming up, I think we'd be just pushing the envelope a little too tight, and it's not, not that we want to do this winter. You don't do bridge projects in the middle of the winter time, not when you're doing road reconstruction. I mean, I can't imagine doing the approach this winter. That doesn't work out very well.
And no one is suggesting that, David.
But we're, we're already in winter. You, you're, you're gonna, and, and roads get shut down in, in, in February and March into April, so you got April, May, June. You're gonna a month and a half before you'd be back to town meeting. Now, until, until we know what Adam's, um, gonna do with his budget, and, um, I, I, I think we, we leave his budget alone right now. We, we do what we talked about doing, is going to a special town meeting like we were gonna do, which we've gotta do anyways, when we can.
A project of, of this magnitude, I think, needs to go in front of the voters, too.
Absolutely, well...
You know, I wouldn't, and I think the money needs to come from somewhere other than his general budget, you know, for this particular project. And, you know, the culvert needs to be done, we, we know that, and we definitely know that Canal Bridge needs to be done. And we have a pretty good plan for the Canal Bridge one. I think the selectmen from Wakefield...
I know, they dropped a solution right in our lap.
Exactly. We couldn't ask for anything better there, yeah. Um, and I definitely want to move forward with it, but it needs to go in front of the voters, and that's where the money needs to come from for that, rather than coming out of one particular budget.
Yeah, I wouldn't be, especially, especially District Two. I mean, that road, those roads really need to get the pavement on them.
Yeah, I mean, when that budget was put together, you know, that money was allocated, um, you know, the, the commissioner that was in place at the time, Joe, I'm sure had a purpose for that money. And, you know, we've gotta figure out what that is, or Joe, or, uh, Adam does, so...
When, when our budgets come up, um, for town meeting, are we still asking the Road Commissioners to submit a plan?
Yes.
That the, that the people can see?
I believe we did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have Joe's plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we do have the plan.
It would be help, I mean...
Yeah.
The Road Committee didn't have that plan.
Right, and Adam definitely needs that plan.
All you gotta do is, um...
Yeah, we could, can you get that to Adam, just so he'll have the plan?
Absolutely.
Unless he has it already, so he's got an idea where...
Right, and there's nothing that says he has to follow that, right?
Right, I mean, it just gives you, it gives you a guideline as to where to head, you know, what, what was in someone else's mind...
Right.
And, you know, and plan to, to work forward, but...
Well, no, because it's difficult, because he hasn't lived in town this long, he doesn't know all of our roads.
Exactly.
So, I mean, it would be hard for him to develop a plan at this point.
Right, so if there's already one there, he definitely needs that to, to get and follow, so...
Is it possible that I can, you can send the Road Committee their plan also?
Absolutely.
Yeah, public, public information.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to see e- any, either district, uh, disadvantage of getting their, their complete budget wiped out on one project.
But, I mean, and I understand that...
But that's what it sounded like.
You know, and trying to secure, um, the pricing that Wakefield had got, that seemed to be something that we should at least discuss.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Those are the board's intent, to put this on a town meet, put it on the town meeting in June? Should we read out the Wakefield?
Next available town meeting, I would say.
Which probably isn't gonna be before June at this rate, is it?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, when we talk...
The governor decides to change something, so...
When we talked to, um, Mr. Edwards, I mean, I think that's what we were telling him, that...
We did. We told him that most likely not until June.
And, you know, and like I said, I, you do the timeline, and the time, the best time to do that project would be about June. So, uh, honestly, it's gonna, it's gonna go a little, because you gotta wait for the funds, 'cause they can't say, okay, we're gonna do, start on June seventeenth after the meeting.
Right.
But, um, at least that we know we're gonna, we'll put for, something forward for town meeting, and we're gonna be rolling that way. I mean, I, I highly doubt, I mean, there, I'm sure there'd be some adjustments in price, but there's gonna be anyways. Uh, I'm sure of that. Every project like that has, you know...
They always go over with things.
Yeah, whether it's, yeah, whether it's good times, bad, or whatever, yeah.
That's why, you know, we, we did talk to Adam about getting a plan for the approachment, and I was gonna go up and tell him about the things that the bridge engineer wanted us to do to secure the, the actual bridge itself, um, that would probably be beyond that. And at the same time, um, my recommendation, just because I know the area pretty well and the road, that the, the road needs to be overlaid anyways. The small section right from the corner didn't get done, and you go up through there, and it, it's getting pretty, pretty tough shape, so this might be an opportunity for him to be able to fix that, do the, the approach, without nailing the hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars that could be on Sanborn Road, Hopper, or some other road. So I think it'd be a benefit for him in the long run, not touching it.
Alright, so at this point, we're just waiting for a town meeting, then?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, alright, thank you.
We'll add that item to the town meeting list.
Yep.
Oh, any more department heads? Okay, I guess we're gonna move down to old business. Article forty-three, application, Tattle Street.
So you've received the packet on the thirteenth, the Road Committee made their recommendation based on the ordinance. As Leslie pointed out, everything is accurate and included in there, so from Cheryl Knight's point, we don't have any concerns.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the Article forty-three for Tattle Street for, uh, up to three thousand dollars.
I'll second that motion. To the vote, approved. Okay.
Okay.
Um, okay, public comment, follow-up law.
So, uh, last week, um, this is digging on what you, the question you had, Dennis, I don't know if you want to come up, you may be able to help some of this. So your next, next few pages, several pages, so, um, under public comment last week, he mentioned that somewhere back in the fifties, there was a vote regarding the planning board and the years of the members. That's, that's what I took the time to follow up on. Okay, so it was actually, um, nineteen fifty-four.
The first time.
The first time.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, well, I guess that changes what I'm gonna say, then. So we found, we found, we had to go, we started, we had to go back. I didn't, you're saying there was one in fifty-four and sixty?
Yes, the state law, the state...
Well...
Made it mandatory.
Right, but in fifty, so in fifty-four, there was an article that said, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the revised statutes, oh, I'm sorry, wait a minute, do I have the right date? The, the town meeting might have been in sixty, let me, let me double check. Can you grab that and see what the date of the town meeting was? 'Cause I might be getting my dates mixed up. Because the article said, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the revised statutes of nineteen fifty-four. So this could be the sixties vote, so let's see what Cheryl comes up with. Chapter ninety-eight, section sixty-one, and authorize and direct the Board of Selectmen to appoint members of the planning board, um, who in turn would be authorized to join and appoint representatives to the York County Regional Planning in accordance with section sixty-four. So, if this is the one that you were talking about, this, this basically adopts section sixty-one of this revised statute. Okay? So, and I did check with codes first to see if they had any, any inkling on this. So unfortunately, section sixty-one is about eight pages long, and there is one of the things in there, does talk about the planning board, how they establish and what the terms should be. So that's, that's an accurate statement. Um, one of the concerns that I have is that if we, if we are gonna say, okay, there's nothing since, since this vote that trumps us following section sixty-one, code enforcement's got about ten pages to go through, because you, you don't get to follow half of it, not the rest of it. So if the other pieces weren't voted, you know, voted on by town meeting to change, then this whole sixty-one stays in, stays in effect unless something's changed. So, he's correct, the first piece about the planning board, but it really opens up a huge can in regards to all these other documents that it talks about, the, the code enforcement should be following, unless we can find something that trumps it differently. And then it references, that same article references sixty-four. Um, it says, accordance with section sixty-four of the same statute, so I've included that for you. The member county, section sixty-four, another piece that the town should be following. So, if, I, I guess we'll see what the date is and see if we think that's the right one. So if that's the case, then this would be something you have to follow, but you gotta follow all of section sixty-one, not just the planning board terms. Does that make sense?
No, but I appreciate that.
Okay, so, um, and, and I feel bad, Cheryl, I worked so hard and had a date on my other copy, but I didn't bring the right copy.
It says, uh, when they pass the ordinance, a list of people that, uh, maybe it's the following year or something.
So you think it's after this one?
Who are appointed.
So this one, yeah, this particular, excuse me, this particular article doesn't mention anything. It just mentions, this was the first one we found. I mean, we had to, we had no idea where to start, you know what I mean? So we started in the fifties and moved forward. This is the first one we found, planning board related. Um, I mean, it's certainly a decision of the board, but I feel like, you know, this really should be something the downstairs should handle, because they would know a lot better if they see this, if something, you know, might have trumped it since then. I mean, this, you know, a lot of this is, is, is gray to me. Um, it was a lot of digging and a lot of research, so I can turn over the town meeting books. I just, I just don't have a way of knowing if these are, you know...
Stuff that we're doing already.
Well, I know that, I mean, I'm telling you, there's a lot of things in here we aren't, but that's not to say the code, that we haven't voted to change them since then. I mean, we're talking about, if this was fifties, sixties, you know, we're talking about sixty years worth of voting since then, so, you know, could it be changed, could it not? I mean...
It was in the sixties, generally, my research, is when the state, um, said we should be, uh, starting our own planning board, and, and that was, uh, with the, uh, what the state had, had made law in fifty-four, and we could go by, under that...
Under that. Which makes me feel like this had to be after fifty-four, if it references, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of the revised statutes of fifty-four.
And went by the, they were back, by the statute in fifty-four.
Um, thank you so much.
State did it.
Are we at, yeah. Article twenty-four. Alright, so that's the right one. So, September first of nineteen, oh, this one. Uh, warrant nineteen sixty-three town meeting. So sixty-three town meeting. So according to the sixty-three town meeting, section sixty-one was adopted. Um, so there is a provision in there about the years, but again, I, you can't just say, okay, we gotta go by section sixty-one A and not the next eight pages of sixty-one. So unless you want to turn it over to code enforcement to start going through it, they would have to show where zoning changes, um, changed each one of these. I mean, there's zone, it's massive.
Oh, I, I, I agree, Adam.
So I don't know where to, you know, I mean, I don't know where to go with it. I can't, I can't give you advice to pick and choose.
Yeah, you're almost, you're the only one that's gonna be the most familiar with this is gonna be downstairs.
Right.
And... I, I, I guess my, my, my thing was, is you, as you read, um, that was an ordinance that created these positions, and, and like you said, unless it's been changed since...
Right.
We're supposed to be following it.
Right, right. And that's the thing, I mean, I can turn over section sixty-one to code enforcement and say, this is what you're supposed to be following, um, but there's gonna be a lot, I mean, there's a lot of things in here that are completely different, probably changed by zoning, but I, I don't know that.
And the rationale for having the five-year appointments was so that you didn't have, you always had people on the board, more familiar on what was going on and how things worked and stuff like that, and so you didn't.
Yeah, so it wasn't bounced around. I mean, I will tell you that in, when we had the last, um, planning board members that left, um, I did sit down with code enforcement officer, and we went through and, and made sure they were staggered better than, because they weren't prior, so it was his advice to stagger the way that we did.
Good job.
Um, and I'm certainly not putting this on him in any, in any respect, but if he didn't know it was five years, and he's been employed by the town ten years longer than me...
No.
You know what I mean? So I don't know what the board wants to do with it, but if it's something you want me to continue to research, and this is certainly not, I mean, it's gonna take some time, so I just don't know where to go with it. But he is, you know, there's article, he is here from nineteen fifty-four. I mean, you know, we can have Cheryl, I still feel like it's better suited with other staff, go through, I mean, so she's found this in sixty-three, she's gonna continue to go forward in these books and pull any article that has anything to do with planning board, to see if, if that piece of it's changed, or if section sixty-one of the statute has been revoked, maybe by article, I have no idea if it did or didn't. So that's, that's where, I mean, that's what I, that's what, I'm not gonna say we, that's what Cheryl found, and I thank her for that, but that's, so that's where we are with, with that, and I copied the whole se- section for you.
With the position we're in now with the planning board, I just felt it was important, and that's why I did the research, how to just start.
Right.
And, there was a reason why, it was five-year appointments.
Right.
Obviously, it wouldn't have made them that, and I just thought, it's the ordinance, and that's what we ought to be following.
Yeah, and it, and it may be, it may be accurate. I mean, it's, you know, the three-year terms, I mean, you were a selectman, um, you know, I've been with the town for fifteen years now, they've been three-year terms since, since, you know, we went back.
Yeah. But just because we've been doing something, if you find out it's wrong...
I, I agree a hundred percent, and I just want to make sure the board understands that that's gonna involve a lot more documents than, than the first section of planning board A.
I think, you know, uh...
But we need to see if it's accurate, first.
Yeah, we do the research, see if we can find any changes, and we ought to have downs, I think we ought to have downstairs look at it, and this might be an opportunity, we have some zoning changes to do. The, myself, I don't think a five-year, myself, is a good idea for the simple reason is, um, I don't think it's gonna accomplish much, because we have people resigning, and get the people to say, yeah, I'm gonna commit for five years for anything, for nowadays, it's almost impossible.
Five years is a big commitment.
We can't get any, we have a hard time getting people to commit for three years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we do the research on it, see what downstairs thinks, um, see if the, anything's been changed in the last, um, well, it'd be eighty years, not eighty years.
Fifty-four, so...
Fifty, fifty-seven, or whatever.
Yeah, because maybe, you know, it's kind of similar to the, the drinking on Sunday issue that we had, you know, it just kind of, you know what I mean? So, they may not be following section sixty-one, just because over time, you know, and like you said, it doesn't, it's not the fault of anybody, at some point, somebody changed it, and, um, unfortunately, oaths aren't required to be kept, you know, any longer than, um...
But the ordinance is the ordinance.
The ordinance is the ordinance, so if you can't find something from fifty-four current, then we do have to either repeal that via town meeting, or follow every comma in that ordinance.
And that's why we really ought to have downstairs look at, make sure that we can, if anything's changed already, they should know, you know, obviously, he may be able to pick out something out of there that would, uh, give a red light, um, if it had been changed. Um, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, nobody had, it's, it's gonna be a lot of work. It's gonna be a lot of work, it's been a lot of work so far, but we need to know the answer. So, I don't, I mean, and whether downstairs does it, or whether upstairs does it, wherever the...
I believe the downstairs really ought to look at...
It's, yeah, it's their, it's their ordinance, so, yep.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
So, we will present to them the article from nineteen fifty-four, referencing that, that we understand based on ordinance, that's what should be followed, and just ask them to go forward and see if they can find anything that repeals that.
And the rest of it, yeah, and, and this whole, uh, whole thing here, you know, have them go through and, you know, see if anything jumps out at them, that, you know. And myself, um, have them make some recommendations if there's something that they think ought to be changed, because, you know, we're gonna be doing zoning changes anyways at town meeting, and, like I said, um, you know, we, we're always looking for people, and we're actually, I think we are looking for an alternate now for the planning board, and they're not, you know, falling out of trees, you know, ready to do it. So, I mean, when you're talking a five-year appointment, it may be something where it might deter people from doing that.
But it did say it was the alternate members, I think, that were the five-year appointments, right? It was the alternates that were five years. Huh?
They were all five years.
Uh, no.
Alternates and everything, so, I mean.
What is, no, what is that, first, man, I just gave away my coffee. What is that, what does that first A say?
I got all screwed up here. Which one you got here?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. The term of the office is five, but initial appointments shall be made for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Right, to save it.
So even if we were to do this, we'd, we'd still have to stagger them.
Yeah, no.
So you'd still have.
But as they come due, as they, if you find that, that that is the ordinance and that is the law, and the voters don't wanna change it, if you decide to put it on the warrant, maybe you don't, then as they come due, you'll just start doing five years moving forward. All right, I will speak to them. I'm not sure where it will fall, you know, as far as availability of priority, but I will speak to them and see if they can help us do some research.
I mean, I would think that this was something we'd wanna make sure that we followed up on before we have any town meetings, before we put any of the planning board stuff through.
Well, they're all valid appointments, I mean, we're not, the most we can do from this point is fix it, do you know what I mean?
Well, no, I'm talking about fixing it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I thought you said they couldn't have a planning board meeting.
No, 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 no. Okay, anything else on that?
Should we put a time limit on how, when we expect downstairs to get back to us on it?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Thirty days? By the end of the year?
I think that's fair. I don't know what.
Shoot for that.
You know, I think we'll make it a little longer than that, because, I mean, we got the holidays and stuff.
Forty-five?
Yeah, month and a half would be good.
Forty-five days?
Yep.
Sorry, I don't have much time.
Okay. Capital Improvement Committee.
So I'm gonna ask them to table that until next week. Your chair, Kim, asked for that to go back on the agenda, she was ready to move forward. Without her here present, hopefully we can table that until next week.
New business, Fire Chief Thermal Image Camera.
So Wayne Ham is here on behalf of the fire chief. They have an old thermal, thermal image camera that they would like to sell to the town of Freiburg. It falls just below the amount for sealed bid, so he's gonna tell you a little bit about that and hopefully get your permission to sell it to them.
Wayne Ham, W fire chief, sent up here by the chief to, he's not able to make it, to request permission to sell the thermal image. After receiving our new one that we got, I don't know, it was a little, really bad, that one was pulled from service. It's not, meaning our standards gotta follow the screen, but they're willing to take it in the name of your parents. It just was not cost effective for us to repair it and move forward with it, so it's from the city storage station. So they had approached us, well, not advanced approached us, excuse me, the, where they've gotten out, they're looking for one, and we have applied, and they're interested in it, so we're trying to move forward with the sale.
Is the item over, what, so we have a minimum rate?
Five hundred.
Five hundred's a minimum, so they're gonna sell it for four ninety-nine.
Yeah. What's the age of that camera?
Probably fifteen years, best we have.
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, I don't have an issue with selling it.
No, no, if guys aren't using it, it's probably just a little off, they'll have somebody else.
Sell it to Freiburg.
Make a motion for the, for that?
Make a motion, we allow the fire department to sell the thermal image camera to Freiburg.
I'll second that.
For four ninety-nine ninety-nine.
Is that a second?
I'll second that.
Vote.
All in favor? Okay, where are we here?
So just have Rick reach out to us, we can help him put together a bill of sale, just need the serial numbers and stuff off it, and the town will draft a bill of sale coming from the selectmen, before we release it, please.
Okay, Earn Paid Leave Policy.
Yes, this is the dreaded.
Every town is dreading this as well.
Yes.
Not because the employees don't, because it's unfunded money that you don't have an option. Tell us a little bit about the new law, Michelle.
Okay, so the new law, which passed last year to go in effect January first of twenty twenty-one, says that all employees, whether part-time or full-time, shall earn at least forty hours, up to forty hours of earned paid leave. And that's one hour earned per forty hours of work. So there are some employees that it might take them two years to earn forty hours. And there are some employees that, you know, could earn it very quickly. This includes people who are not already earning PTO, our regular full-time people. Everybody that's employed that's paid a salary to the town of Acton, a wage of some sort, stipend, except for election workers that earn less than a thousand dollars a year. So this is all of your per diem people, this is, and elected people are also excluded. However, this would include Adam until his appointed term is up, and he would keep those hours for the, the duration of his employment with the town.
Now, does that include Will? Will's.
No, Will is elected.
He's elected, but he still gets a check as an employee?
Yeah, but he's elected.
Okay.
So, and you guys wouldn't earn it. So this is a, a rather expensive little thing. We're gonna have to have a reserve, a rollover account, so that we're not funding this, because there are probably a majority of those employees that are gonna earn it, we legally have to fund it, and they'll never use it. Because, like, when you sign up for a per diem shift, you sign up for a shift that you know you can work. There might be a rare occasion that their car breaks down or they get sick, and they'll have to call the chief and say, I'm gonna use my earned time today, sorry. But chances of that happening, you know, often are very slim. And it's, we're looking at at least twenty thousand dollars to fund, based on the employment this year. So that's one week for every employee. That includes your video stipend people, your animal control officer, your health officer, your forester, and that would require those people who get stipends to document their hours worked. So every month, the animal control officer would not only have to hand in the timesheet for that set stipend, but we would need to know the hours worked. Nine AM to, you know, ten, ten AM on January first, it all has to be documented every month. Yeah.
Yep.
No, is this the new law that was passed last year, ten employees or more?
Ten employees or more, yes.
Yeah.
Yep. So, and the, the initial thought was that municipalities were going to be exempt. But the wording that came out after they revised everything that was finally approved did not exempt municipal employees, it actually prohibited municipal officers to creating policy that would, you know, supersede this. So those of us that are already earning PTO, we won't earn more, we won't earn an extra forty hours, we'll just earn what we earn. But everybody will have something.
So what would happen, say you have per diem people that come up and don't work a lot of per diem time, and say they accumulate, you know, twenty hours of paid time off over a year's point in time, or not even that much.
Yeah.
Say ten hours. Is there any way we can do like a, to keep the books clean every year, pay them for their time off?
No, they lose it, don't they?
I mean, you could, that then becomes an expense. If we, if we create this fund as a reserve, as a one-time hit on somebody's taxes or out of undesigned fund, however you guys wanna fund it. And the thing is, is that if I earn, if I, if I was not in my position, I was a per diem employee, if I earned twenty hours this year, I would carry, and didn't use any, I would carry it over to next year. Next year, I could only earn twenty hours. You can never have more than forty hours in that bank in, in a twelve-month period.
Okay.
So if I brought forty over, I wouldn't earn any the next year.
So you were able to carry them over anyways?
Yes.
But it doesn't, I mean, the policy says that it has to be used during employment with the town, or they'll be lost.
Right, so if, if you.
Also, if you leave.
If you never use it and you leave, or you're fired, that, it just goes away, there's no cash value to it.
Then they can only use it, so there's no, right, no cash, so they can't cash it in, or?
Right. And, I mean, the law states what we have to do. This policy is created to, because we pay out our full-time PTO upon departure. So the Department of Labor said, if you don't wanna pay it out, one, you first have to create a policy separate from your regular policy, and if you wanna have restrictions on its use, you know, giving the employer advance notice and, and so forth, this calls for four weeks for a planned absence notice?
That's a lot.
Just, it is a lot, but when you're talking about per diem, you know, it's usually two months out that they're making their schedule over at the fire department.
Yeah, I guess that piece, but when I think about the video stipends or the ACO, I mean, it's just.
And then there's emergent needs, so it allows, you know, if, if you're sick, because you can use it for anything, it's not restricted to what you can use it for. If you have an urgent need, you're sick, a family member's sick, somebody's, you know, something has happened, you work with your employer, you let them know at, at the most convenient time. But, yeah, this is.
For the most part, the employee's probably never gonna use this.
Correct.
So it's just a matter of setting up a bank, setting up a, a bank fund or, you know, the money and having it sit there.
Yeah, and this also does include call firefighters, if you can believe it or not. So if you only get paid for that call that you went to, you're earning time on those calls throughout the year.
So if you're sick, the next time a call comes in.
You can call and say, hey, I can't come, but, you know, put me in for my time on earned paid leave.
Yeah.
So how does, I mean, so when I think about the animal control officer, see, he gets a flat salary every month.
Right.
So if he doesn't answer a dog call.
Yeah.
He's still gonna get that same salary. So why would he ever call in and use two hours, a couple hours of his time?
Well, I mean, because technically, if, if he's not, if he's not available, he shouldn't be paid. If, if the animal control officer was going away for two weeks, let's say, in the summer.
Yeah.
Um, he could let you know, I'm not gonna be here, well, I would hope that we weren't gonna pay him that whole salary, because we'd have to pay somebody else to cover for.
Right, right, and that piece would make sense.
Yeah, so he could bank up earned time, yeah.
So I guess we're talking about the salary, 'cause the salary is kind of a, theoretically, if you're paid on a salary, it's on so many hours a month. Correct.
Theoretically. So what, what the state says is that you have to look at the month previous.
Yeah.
To the hours that they worked for, in that position, which is why they have to track all of their hours monthly.
Yeah.
You have to look at the month previous to figure out what their average weekly hours were.
Yeah.
And then you, you divide that into what the monthly salary is and say, okay, you know, you're earning.
So they're turning, they're going from salary to making it, so they'd go in salary, dividing it up to an hourly wage.
Yeah, which has to be above minimum wage, which will be twelve fifteen.
Yeah.
That was my next question.
Okay, so at the end of the day, we could be underpaying them.
Yes.
How's that work?
Well, that's what's gonna happen, especially in positions like the animal control officer.
Right.
Keep going to that one, when he ends up, you know.
Well, that's what I'm getting to.
Counting how many hours he's actually putting in, you know, and maybe it's gonna come back around.
So it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we put someone on salary, but we're gonna exceed his, his hourly pay.
But that's the only way to meet this requirement, isn't it? That's how, they're telling us we have to calculate it.
We'll have to do it like this to start with, and then if we just, you know, if we determine that, like, animal control, for instance, is consistently under minimum wage.
Right.
We'll have to set a wage to it and go from salary to an hourly.
Right.
Yeah, okay. The fire department really is okay the way they act, is we, that is based on a minimum wage.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So Michelle, are you okay with Kim being out, and we've got the word draft across it, assuming the gentleman don't have any more questions, we'll put it on the agenda for final signature next week.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, as long as it's in effect before January, that.
And where are you going, where are we gonna get the money to fund this?
Um, we're gonna raise it. At town meeting next year.
Are you gonna do it, how are we gonna do it starting in January?
Between, yeah.
I mean, theoretically, it's going to be a bank, it's gonna be a pot of money sitting here.
Right.
That will most likely never get used.
And theoretically, it's gonna take a long time for them to earn that.
Right.
You know, based on what they work.
So if something happens between January and.
June.
And July first.
Yes.
When voted money would go into effect.
We have an emergency fund.
Okay, we have some money sitting there, okay.
And that would require a.
Warrant finance.
A warrant finance vote, but.
Okay. Is that the fifteen thousand that we have?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And while we're talking about the emergency fund, I, I forgot to mention this to Jennifer as part of something that I wanted to discuss, but I know you all saw my email to the city of Sanford about the dam bill.
Yes.
Well, we talked about that.
Yes.
About not using it, waiting until town meeting.
Yeah, so my question is, do I pay what we budgeted now?
I would pay what we, what is, what the town voted to pay.
Okay.
And no more right now.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yeah, 'cause it's due by the end of this month, so I just wanted to double check.
When I went to the last, well, it was a Zoom dam meeting, my question to them was, we don't vote on money until June.
Right.
So we won't have any more money available till after that fact, after that date. And Sanford uses the same dates as well. Shapley, as you know, uses January first, so it's a lot easier for.
I did make a plea to the city of Sanford, you know, figure this out before we vote on our budgets, if you want us to contribute, because we can't, it's not a council meeting for us.
No.
It's a process for us to use, you know, to come up with extra money.
But, but in, in all fairness, and I hate to always be the one that, that brings up Sanford, but Michelle, in both towns, has to ask for bills, ask for bills from the city of Sanford.
Yeah.
And then the fact that that dam project finished six, eight months it took for to get our overpayment, I mean, they can wait until July first.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, I think we have no, no, no choice, we have to, we're.
Well, you do have an emergency fund account that you could pay it out of, but based on.
I don't think we need to.
Absolutely not, based on their.
What's the worst they're gonna do to us, kick us off the dam coalition?
Wasn't there a couple of things?
They like our money.
Wasn't there a couple of things in Shapley that we couldn't get bills from them? For like, two years in a row, we just didn't get.
Two years, yeah, that's why we built up a reserve over there for that, because they never sent us bills.
We may, we, we probably wanna think about doing the same thing here.
Oh, absolutely.
Some ways, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
We'll add it to the list, we've got a long, a lot of things to go.
Okay.
All right, so we'll prep that for next week, and assuming Kim is feeling better, we'll have her meet one-on-one with Michelle before next Wednesday, so we can be ready for signatures.
Workers' Comp Policy.
So unfortunately, workers' comp is happening a lot this year in twenty twenty, like everything else. And we don't have an official policy, so, and this isn't something I want you to act on now, this is something I compiled with the help of HR, Main Consulting, who helps work with the HR group through Main Municipal, and pulled in some similar towns, what they're doing. So this is a policy that, you know, we, we kinda came up together with, presented to you, you know, I want you to take a look at it and, you know, let me know what you don't like, and if you had some other ideas, if you have something different in a place of employment that you might have worked at, or had, or do work at, that is better. But, so there isn't a clear path for us as far as health insurance and main retirement and so, and so forth, because there's nothing in our, in our personnel policy that talks about workers' comp. So because it's come up quite a bit this year, I thought we ought to have a policy.
No, so that was the one that we talked about, the main part is, is that it says, if someone's on workers' comp currently, they don't have to pay it?
Yes, they do.
They do?
Yes. Taxes are not.
Oh, that's what it was.
Yeah, yeah. The workers' comp payments are not taxable.
So guys, we'll review this, and we'll bring it back up next week and see if we can get together with Kim.
We can do this next week, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and if you, if you have notes on it, if you, you know, shoot me a text or an email or whatever.
Okay. Okay. Vote to Transfer Road Funds.
Okay. District one through November thirtieth, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents, and that is for unemployment and workers' comp. District two is fifty-three dollars and twelve cents.
So you wanna transfer.
The general government municipal management fund to cover the expenses that have already been paid. And going forward, I would just pay, I would just pay that portion, the, the tax portion out of general government.
Not other roads.
Okay. There a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the district one and district two funds to be I'll make a motion that we approve the District 1 and District 2, um, funds to be transferred, fifty, uh, $568.33 from District 1, $53.12 from District 2, and going forward, we allow the treasurer to transfer or pay out of, um, what was the fund you said it was in? General Government?
Yeah.
Pay it out of general government, um, as needed, moving forward, this fiscal year.
I'll second that. Small favor. Okay. Freedom of information request.
This is, um, our weekly request from Mr. Crespe. The area is related to Martel. Um, because you didn't have a meeting last week, you weren't able to sign this, um, I did notify him that the planning board meeting was canceled, um, for this week. So, um, I expect you'll see another one for next week, but, um, for now, this one's gonna be muted, so it's just going on the record that we received it and resolved it.
Okay, draft budget timeline.
So Michelle and I spent some time on this today, and it's, it, this is really hard to put together right now, not knowing if we're gonna be at an open town meeting, or if we're gonna be at a secret ballot. It, you know, it's, it's a draft, and we'd like you okay with kind of releasing it, but there's gonna be a memo on top that says, you know, there's a, a good chance that these dates change. We try to set the dates based on, um, based on the secret ballot election, because that buys us more time. So if anything, we don't wanna do it the other way around, because if we make it an open town meeting, then we don't have time to sign the order calling for a secret, we're gonna be in a, in a tougher situation. So, um, we've got a breakdown here that the requests are due by Monday, February 1st, so should really like to get this out, so that departments have all of January, February to, uh, work on them. Any ordinances, we just need to know by February 5th. Uh, final ordinances are due by the end of February, so that kind of gives the planning board an idea, um, you know, between now and the end of February, what they need to get together, if they choose to put ordinances together. Um, a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen is a few weeks earlier than usual, but, um, really, it's just on, Michelle and I, if those budgets come in on February 1st, it's just a matter of can we get the warrant together by Saturday, March 6th, and assuming everybody meets their deadline, I will certainly meet ours. So that's the meeting, we don't know if it'll be Zoom or in person. Um, that would give the warrant and finance, we put a date of Friday, April 16th. So that gives them from March 6th to April 16th, so that's about six weeks, uh, to vote on the articles, um, so we felt like that was, that was fair. Um, that would have the selectmen signing a week and a Wednesday later, I think we figured it, so it wasn't the following Wednesday, because you guys are gonna be able to make your recommendations, but the Wednesday after that, which would be the 28th, um, we get it posted by that 30th, that still kind of allows a timeline, um, for a secret ballot if we need it. So that's what we're thinking. Question is, what are you thinking? It looks great, awesome. February 1st is what we're
We have to make a motion on this.
You don't have to, it's just, it's gonna be a draft, but we would like to hear you on camera say that you support it, so that
Looks good to me.
When we put a letter with your dear John on it, saying this is the deadline.
What do you think, Ed?
Do you feel like that gives enough time? I mean, things are sooner, but there's still enough time in between everything?
Yeah, I mean, as far as the bu, budget due date, that's the same. It's always either the last day of January or the 1st of February.
Yeah, just everything else has moved up a little bit, but really, it's that, it's the Saturday date that we moved up. By moving that up two weeks, that gave everything else the ability to be shifted up.
So what does that give warrant and finance? That gives them
Six weeks.
Six weeks?
Six weeks.
We think they'd be able, yeah.
How, how many, how, how long do they have this year? Wasn't that?
Well, this year was different, this is because we were on Zoom and
One screwed up here, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, normally, I feel like they have a good month. I mean, that's, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I think, and Dennis is here, certainly, he's still the sitting chair, um, do you feel like six weeks is, is
That's okay, Dennis, okay.
I mean, I feel like that's, you know, I mean, if we run into a situation, we're not gonna hold them to the wire too much, but we'll work together, but it just gives us something to go by.
Okay. Yep, I think it's fine.
I like it.
You like it, all right.
Okay, COVID-19 discussion.
Oh, COVID. You have in front of you one of the latest documents, this is dated November 23rd, from the state regarding enforcing face covering rules in public settings. So we have a few things that we need to, to go over, and we need to know what the board's support, well, I say what the board's support level is, I'm really not sure that it's in their control. Is that true, Michelle?
Correct.
So, you have to have a mask on, according to the state of Maine, inside, outside, anytime you're around people, if you're in your own private space and nobody's around you, you're allowed to not have it on. But if you're, and if you're outside walking on a trail, you don't have to have a mask on, but if you're standing outside, talking to two or three people, you're at the transfer station, you have to have a mask on. That's, that's the rule, that's the law, mask, a shield, something. We are running into situations in several of our different town buildings where it's just not happening. So, a few things that Michelle and I spent some time looking into today was, what are the consequences? What if they have a medical? What if they just refuse to? What are we supposed to do about it? We have employees that we are required by law to keep safe. You have somebody that has a medical reason, they come to the counter, they have a medical reason, they're not gonna wear a mask, but Cheryl is expected to wait on them. How is that fair? So, these are things that we, we drafted together, or we, we reached out to. So, what I understand, and, and Michelle will correct me if I'm wrong, is that, first of all, there is a and, and there is a fine and a penalty set forth in this executive order, supposedly, the, the sheriff's department, it's supposed to be who you call to handle it. If someone cannot wear a mask due to a medical reason, it is our responsibility to set up special circumstances for them to get their transactions done. If they flat out just refuse to, to wear one, we can ask them to leave the building. So, if you have a medical reason and you cannot wear a mask when you get out of the transfer station, when you get out of your car at the transfer station to dump at the hopper, and you can't wear a shield, which is different than a mask, but is still acceptable, so it shouldn't affect the, the breathing issues that a lot of people have with masks on, we are proposing that, you know, if the transfer station on Wednesdays is open until 4, that if you are not, due to medical reasons, able to wear a mask, that you can come from 4 to 4:30 on Wednesdays.
And the staff would, would stay inside the building, they'd stay away from that person dumping to not expose the staff, but they'd be there to be able to visually supervise.
You have a double-edged sword, I mean, you have, you have a responsibility of protecting the employee who has rights and can file suit against you, if you don't do something to protect them. And you have the right of the other people that are walking in and out, you know, you've got two lanes, you've got somebody behind the transfer station, or you have people lined up here, Billy doesn't wanna wear a mask, he's walking past these people, they can sue you for not protecting them. So it's, um, we have people that are still coming into this building and, and other buildings, and staff that are just not complying with this, and
Yes, my question is, so if you open up the, uh, transfer station for, when you say half an hour?
And Main Municipal said that was sufficient, correct?
Yep.
Well, but we can't close it off to just that, just to the people who don't, you know, don't wanna, uh, wear the mask, right, those are the
No, those people who just don't wanna wear it, we don't have to make any accommodation for them.
Right. Unless they use the words, "I have a medical reason," then if you're not willing to wear a mask when you get out, or you're not willing to wear when you, when you come in, we have the right to not wait on them. And it's not, and I wanna make sure this is clear, it's not that we want this, or that any of the staff want this, but you pay Michelle and I to look out for the town of Acton. And we have residents to look out, we are hearing from residents daily, we are hearing from staff daily. You know, we have people driving by, when there's a half a dozen people in the parking lot, and they're not wearing masks, we're getting calls.
I'm just, so, how do we know these people are ones with medical issues?
We don't, if they tell you
Pretty much what you're doing is open up the dump for
They're gonna go by, they were.
If they tell you, yeah, if they tell you have, they have a medical condition, you do not have the right to question them, you don't have
So for half an hour, nobody will be at the hopper, and anybody could, and dump, correct?
That's correct. But for the rest of the people that are, that are following the orders of the governor, whether they agree with them or not, I don't think you're gonna find them going from 4 to 4:30 and being exposed to all of these people that aren't willing to wear a mask. I think that 95% of your residents are wearing them, and they're not gonna go, go to a, go to a place that there's, you know, a ton of people with no mask. I mean, I don't think you're gonna find a lot of it, but we have to know what we're telling the staff on all levels, when people refuse to wear them. I mean, we have them, we're giving them out, we give them out here, we give them out there, some people just say no.
Right.
You know, and then the, the other piece, and I wanna have this conversation with Michelle, I mean, we, uh, I guess a couple of things that come to mind, when someone refuses to wear a mask when they come to the counter. So, I can't do what the transfer station can do and say, you know, dump, and I'll watch it from inside. I can't wait on somebody
Right.
without them being there.
You can't, I mean, you can do by mail, you can use the drop box, I mean, and it would be an inconvenience to them. It would be an inconvenience to you, too. I mean, it's easier to get them out and get it taken care of.
Right. You can't really have staff go up to a car window, or
Right. I mean, you have the drop box, somebody can drop something off, you know, in the morning, and maybe pick it up at night, um...
But because, and that's true, I mean, because that, so that would give us, I mean, that's a way of, you know, we have, we wanna meet their, you know, we wanna make sure they get their transaction done, so if they can't do it online, we can do by mail or by drop box.
Right, and that's for people with medical conditions.
Right.
But you can't ask what they are, so you don't know whether they have one or not.
But, I mean, I think some people, a majority of people are pretty forthcoming, whether, whether they're not wearing it because they think it's ludicrous, or, you know, or whether they, they can't.
And I guess, I mean, I, I'm not gonna lie, I'm, I'm one, I mean, I wear masks all day long, but I do, you know what I mean, I struggle, I find myself struggling to breathe with it, con, you know what I mean, but I, I wear it. But these are better, so I'm wondering if a lot of people, you know, if these shields would help, you know, just long enough to do a quick transaction.
Yeah. Um... But what do you do with a shield once they're done with it? I mean
Throw it away.
Yeah.
It's yours.
You can't really wash those.
No, no, we throw them out. I mean, I have mine that I stick on my desk, and I doubt anybody wants to use it.
Yeah, but that's your own personal shield, so
Right, yeah, well, no, I mean
You're only using it, so
We give out masks, I mean, maybe we start giving out, but we have had a few people, and we've had some this week, that just, you know, no. Like, can you grab a mask? No.
Yeah.
But, okay, I'm gonna need you to, I'm not.
I mean, in some ways, the petition between, you know, at the counter is a shield, but it doesn't fall under the
Doesn't meet the government's order.
So...
The other piece I wanted to mention are these, these logs that we're filling out. You know, we fill out these logs every day, each department is supposed to fill out the logs. Um, if it's something that we're gonna continue to do, as recommended by our insurance company, then we need to instill it at the fire department, if anybody's going in there to get burn permits, I don't know if they are or not, and also the recycling center. Um, people go in there, and it's no different than them walking in here, town building is a town building, so... I mean, is that right?
Yep.
Correct.
And the recycling building's gonna be next to impossible.
Yeah, and, and I think
It's not, I mean, it's not, it's no easier here than, I mean, they come in
I mean, well, actually, the way to do the recycling building is the overhead doors up, and you don't enter the building.
Like we were doing.
So...
But there, he does have them going back in.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, now it's getting colder now, so
Mm-hmm.
So the door will have to be shut.
Right, because the heat will be running
Well, I mean, it's no different when they walk in, they, there's a clipboard there, and they write their name and phone number on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be a good backup up there. Backing, it's gonna back people up, but
I mean, the alternative is, we don't keep the logs.
Right.
And, you know, we post it on Facebook or something, if one of us comes, because the idea is, is that if one of us
It's for contract, take, tracing.
Gets sick, that we can notify those people that, that have been in close contact with us.
Right.
Uh...
But it's interesting, as we have those conversations, of that it is to protect, protect the residents if one of us gets sick, but the flip side of it is that if, you know, Leslie's closest to me, so if, if Leslie gets sick, she's not gonna call and tell me, you know what I mean? She's not, that, so the flip side, there's no protection for the staff.
Right.
So I'm required to call Leslie if I get sick and tell her, you know, you were in and this happened, but she's not required to tell me.
And, I mean, the insurance company isn't requiring us to, they're suggesting that we do it. Um, there are lots of towns that don't do it. I mean, all, your businesses, your restaurants and stuff like that, where people are sitting down and eating for, they're there for a period of time, they're required by law to do it, and they're required to, to send it to the state daily.
I, I would think that if we're making people sign up, everybody that goes through this, gotta sign up, they're gonna go, all grab the same pen, have all the same piece of paper, it's not probably accomplishing a whole lot. Yeah, you're probably making more trouble.
For our defense, we do sanitize the pens, but
Yeah, but you guys do, but
But here, a lot of times, I mean, do they always sign?
Well, we, we normally, I mean, we just started the last couple of days.
You guys actually fill it
We fill it out.
Yeah, you know, we can't have all of those guys. They don't, there's no signature required, it's just a name.
No, 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 she'll, we'll just write down Leslie's name and write her phone number.
Name, usually, what, name and phone number or something like that.
Right, so we don't, they're not touching the
Right.
I mean, we, last couple of days, we have let them fill them in.
At the transfer station, I, I see
The same thing, I mean, he'd have a clipboard.
Yeah, full-time job, those guys just sign people in and out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I mean, it's more easier for us.
No, except here, it's a slower pace, if you will.
Yes, one at a time, and
Yes, it's a slower pace than having, you know, 10 cars lined up at the transfer station, all trying to get rid of the trash at the same time.
They wouldn't have to do them at the, at the hopper.
I know, but, but out of those 10 cars, seven of them are gonna go over and get rid of the cardboard and, and glass and whatnot, so...
Well, and then the question is, you know, if we stop doing the logs, I mean, i- i- isn't it going to be apparent, and, and maybe not, I mean, depending on, I guess it's gonna depend on who the staff member is, but if a staff member in the clerk's office gets sick, there's gonna be a notice on Facebook saying that we're shut down for 14 days. So, people will be able to self-figure out if they were in or not. I mean, we're certainly not gonna name names, but is that the flip side? Would that kind of satisfy it? I mean, if we end up shutting down, we're gonna have to make a public statement.
Right.
So that would kind of say to those people, right, I mean, with that?
Or can we just exempt the transfer station?
Uh, I, I, I think the whole idea is fair across the board through all of this.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because, I mean, we're running into that with employees and not just customers.
Yeah.
Um, so I think it's fair across the board. Your employees are expected this, and your customers are expected this. And I think what Jennifer wants clarification on is, if one, you know, what, what are we gonna do when the customer says no? Not a medical condition, but when the customer says no, what are we gonna do? Number two, what are we gonna do when the employee says no?
Well, when the employee says no, do they not have the, do they
Well, if they have a medical reason to say no.
Yeah, we're gonna have to know a medical reason on that one.
We would know already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So they don't, and the answer is still no.
Yeah. Then, okay, let's go to the personnel policy.
Right.
Disobeying, there's gonna be something in there for that, I know there is, so, yep.
Now, you've talked to Bob about this at the transfer station.
So we, we have, um, you know, we've talked to him about, I mean, he knows, we've had a lot of, a lot of conversations, and he's trying to protect the residents and his staff just as much as, you know, as we are, and I'm certainly, you know, don't like being, you know, that person, but if a resident, and, and they will say to me, you know, why, why will I be notified that I'm safe if I came into the town hall, but if I'm exposed to the transfer station, why aren't I being notified?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, I realize that it's more work, and I don't, I mean, I know you appreciate it a lot.
Playing devil's advocate here, you know, and just
The lines we have out the door as well, I mean, it's, it's tough
Yeah.
all the way around.
Yeah.
I don't recommend exempting, and I'd rather, I think you'd be better off to either say, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to do this for a little while, or maybe we just, we just, um, we stop doing them.
Yeah.
Um...
Does Bob have any, I mean, I'm sure he's probably shorthanded, I'm sure, does he have anybody that he could, for the, uh, recycling building, take care of, writing down the name, and
I bet they probably could, could rotate around.
You know, when they come through, what's your name, blast it out.
That's only, right, only if they come in.
I just don't believe it's a good idea to have a public signing their own thing.
No, no, yeah. And we probably should make sure that all departments are not letting them sign in.
Yeah.
Um, because I know that some, some departments will sign in, some, I'm not sure why we really kind of shifted from that, we've always written it down, the last few days, we've just kind of passed the flipboard, because I think we're down an employee, and it's, it's another step, um... Right, but we can't really clean the paper, so, um...
Yep.
Could you have a recommendation, Michelle, as far as the logs, enforce it at the transfer station and fire department, or just let it lapse for a while, knowing that our, we would have some sort of public statement? Well, I don't know if we would, if
Keep, no, keep, keep the logs going.
You sure?
Keep them going all places.
Yeah, I, I think if we're going to one place, we gotta be consistent, do it everywhere.
Well, like Michelle said, you have the option of, you know, not doing it if you want.
Not right now is the time, now's not the time to get lax, so...
Yeah, 'cause I think we were just talking, there's more cases in Acton right now than there has been all year, so it would be kind of pointless to go backwards, I guess, at this point, so...
All right, so the logs will go to all departments, and we want staff signing in, names and phone number.
Staff will be the ones that'll be filling out the log.
And, um, there's nothing, Michelle, there's nothing in any of these executive orders that say that, you know, we have to open the transfer station or the town clerk's office, you know, three days a week for an extra half hour.
Yeah.
We can go one day, and we'll let Bob pick what day that is, for a half hour.
Yep.
From, you know, the next half hour that he's, that he's opened.
We have to make some sort of accommodation to offer those services.
But it doesn't have to be every day.
Is that gonna affect his budget a whole lot? Probably not.
A little bit. They probably could scale back, because
Yeah, I would imagine, he wouldn't keep full staff there for, yeah.
No, you would keep one at the, one at the Packer, and one in the other building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he may even just do it himself, it's hard to say.
Yeah.
Um, so, and so the letters that we'll, we're gonna put out are gonna have accommodations, and it's gonna talk about the difference between a medical, which we're not, we won't, and we continue to not ask, and then just refusal. And refusal, we are allowed, correct, by law, to tell them
Turn you away.
Cannot wait on them, we will not wait on them.
Yeah, and then you point them in the direction of the drop box. Yeah, so...
So, and we're gonna, I mean, unfortunately, with all these restrictions we have, um, even the town hall here, or the parking lot here, after meetings and stuff like that, you gotta have a mask on.
Yep.
Well, and, and the other thing is, and, and I'm, you know, I'm probably just as, as I look at Cheryl and measure, I mean, we're supposed to be, we're supposed to still be six feet apart in the masks, and, and I wanna make sure that, you know, I work hard at not letting my personal opinion, you know, out there, but this isn't, I mean, I, I, I say it again, and I know I just said it, but our job is to protect you and to protect the town, so, you know, Cheryl can come to you any day and say, well, every selectman's meeting, you know, Jennifer's only three feet away from me, you know what I mean, so when I look at, you know, as I use myself
You're more than six feet, you're fine.
You have to be six feet, six feet and the mask, so it's not an option, these are not rules that we're making up, so
The mask is the order, it's
Well, isn't it six feet an order?
Yes, when practical.
Yeah.
When practical, so
Yeah.
here is practical, out there is practical, we gotta start separating more, and
Congregational side's probably, is not a good idea.
Well, when, right.
Yeah.
You do, you gotta be six feet apart. If you do, you gotta be six feet apart.
Yeah.
Okay, we all set there?
I'm fine. Okay. Down a public comment, before, we do have an executive session tonight? Okay. You wanna do public comment before we do executive?
So, um, we're gonna skip right on, uh, page nine, we'll go back to page afterwards, uh, public comment. Any? Okay, I guess we're, do we have any public comment?
Yeah, I forgot, like, one or two quick little things. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I do have a conference call scheduled tomorrow with a gentleman from our, from the state regarding our SMS, so we're moving forward with that. Um, so I have a conference call with him tomorrow, I meant to tell you earlier.
Okay, so I guess, um.
I'll make a motion, we're gonna do an executive session pursuant to Title I, four oh five, six A, personnel at seven thirty-one.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Okay.
Yeah, I told Dad this was gonna be a lot. Well, my first, I told, a lot of them, they did not, they, well, would show me I got a text message, and I went, I called him, and I, I just clicked on it. He was so, I didn't even, I didn't even know, I looked at the sign, and I don't think about it. Some people saw that, so. So Cheryl, that mean we have to wear them down, a sand shed, if you're like, well, that cuts up, and those, those stuff?
No, yeah. If you're by yourself, I would say probably not, but if you have, if there's anybody around you, you're supposed to be wearing a mask according to the state.
I'm thinking someone.
If you're on town property, you better wear.
Yeah, well, you don't even have to be on town property. If you're walking down the sidewalk in the town banter, you're supposed to be wearing a damn mask.
You see me walking down the sidewalk, so.
I'm just saying that, that's.
Well, if you're on, you're on public property, you have to go upstairs.
They haven't got a call, 'cause I was in front of a death, sucking up, leaving Detroit.
Yeah.
Well, the death, like, in the roadway, no sign, no flaggers, I think somebody's gonna call, and I would go. 'Cause I'm in the town away, 'cause a certain person was like, I think we were gonna come to town.
Was that me or?
No, that wasn't you, this guy, it wouldn't be either. But, yeah. 'Cause he has to do it every year. But, he'll make a call.
Does everyone, does anyone have any more applications than that?
I don't know, it must be.
I don't know, does that make more, it's easy to be tested.
Yeah, I mean, everybody gets tested, it's very.
They say that rapid testing, you know, you're, you're, right, was it?
I said that the, uh, my wife had two tests up, you know, and my son's had seven, being at college. Seven, he had to get it just to come home, he had to have, had to have a negative test to get home.
I'll be a top one.
All right.
So you're, have a great one.
Two of them test, one test takes two days, one test, they can tell in two hours.
Yeah, and they say that new one, the saliva test, it's actually pretty accurate.
One of them they take, and they shove it up the top of your head, and that takes about two hours to go on.
Pretty brutal, I guess.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, no, I don't know.
Tilt goes up, and it tickles your brain, and it runs.
And it never says, shoot, if they don't wanna punch you in the face, you're doing it wrong, I don't wanna punch you in the face. It's really that.
What you see today, though? The governor said that we get, there's gonna be four phases to the main, it can be all. And the first phase, what we're gonna get, what the hell, as you said, thirteen thousand?
Twelve.
Twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand.
Doses for the whole state.
But you gotta have, you know, but you gotta have two doses.
For the whole state?
So it's only six thousand, really.
And, and obviously, there will be medical, medical courses.
Yeah.
I'll donate mine to our lots, if I'm not gonna get it.
I'm, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, what the heck is, twelve, fifteen thousand doses, I mean, that's nothing.
No, considering the medical, the medical.
And people like me.
Have you done any research on that?
I'm not gonna be eligible to get.
I had some great results.
They're vaccinated until stage four.
That is, have you seen what they're putting in this vaccine yet?
No, but I can't imagine anything worse.
The change in the adjuvant to swine, which is derived from shark's liver, and that was the thing that was in the antler X vaccines and given to the military. To cause people to lose control. And that's what's in it.
My mom had a friend, um, she lives out of Lynn House, and she went for their daughter came home, and I don't know, came for a visit. She got, she went on a little doctor, gave a test, and came back positive, so she wore it, come up, and she went like two days later, took a test, and came back negative. I'm like.
There's, there's a lot of false positives, yeah, a lot of false positives.
And, and when they say the swine rate's ninety-nine percent.
I mean, it puts like, you know, they showed these people on the news and, yeah, they're the ones that tell you, you gotta, gotta, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta be as bold as life you're known, I mean, like.
It's affecting the people that cross my immune systems and other issues mainly. I mean, the flu's pretty much gone now, it hasn't ever.
We don't, because they're diagnosing the flu as COVID.
Yeah, everything is COVID.
I mean, last, last, well, last, last, all the way, my friend, he went for a sec, and he thinks he had it last year.
Then he did, then he thought he was gonna die.
I know, but.
The doctors couldn't figure out what the dog was, and breathing, and.
We, I worked with, I can say anything, but it was right at the beginning. So nobody knows him.
He had it, but no one else knew he lived with it. Another friend of mine was.
You could have had it, well, every, I could have had it, every, I mean, I've never.
I think, I think there's a lot of people that, I mean, that can tell for themselves that have it, if you just don't.
Just they sit for decades, and it's, you know, you might be, you can be carrying it, obviously. Yeah, that's the majority of that, you know, I mean.
I feel like, I feel like everybody's had it, but who, who knows, you're around so many, you know, when you go to the store, you know, you like go to a gas station, I mean, what they.
Drive a gas pump?
Yeah, yeah, I try to go, remember, I was driving, I mean, you did, but this.
I don't know, my great sense, I just can't say it, I just tell them they're in your hands.
Oh, I agree.
You know, you can't go to the urgent care clinic.
What'd you say?
You cannot go to the urgent care clinic.
The doctor?
It's no longer the urgent care clinic.
What is it?
Now COVID and COVID.
Oh, geez.
Okay, and you have to call, you can't just, it's, there's a lock, you have to call.
I know, I know, the one.
They won't take anybody, you can sit, they give a lock in, you know, everybody's like, oh, there's a big one. How many people in Penny Park go there?
Yeah, my wife does elderly care, and the lady she takes care of's got her mask. She's, her legs are huge, and she's got a big infection, burned, traveling hospital. We closed the hospital down, she's fine, she's at home. Now, American Hospital, a week later, had a couple burns. And staying there, she should've stayed in the hospital, but she's also being nine years old, you know, it's not a good place.
No, that's what I mean, I don't know. I usually wear a mask when I go to stores.
Yeah, I mean, I would wear a mask when I go to stores, I've gotten that, I've got, I don't know who it is, they all, this, and that.
Go down to Combs, pump me some gas. I'm wearing a mask. No, if I go in the store, the mask will log. And unusually, have, use the back of the language, you have the mask.
Yes, dear.
You tried to spin your one?
I noticed. I've already, I've taken, I've been actually talking to Bob quite a bit lately, too, so, I've been meeting with him, of course, everyone's great, trying to get a game plan, and he really came in with them a lot, I was over there a week and a half ago.
Next time you'll also be coming out, like, like, because I like to talk and talk, and talk about pinky, and maybe.
I have all the bridge, the, the bridge contractors' information, I have everything I need.
Right, 'cause I'm thinking maybe that, that some of your bridge.
Mm-hmm, I think he'd be the guy to do it, I mean, this composite bridge stuff, I've seen it, not the humane, where my kid goes, and that's where they know a lot of it, and it's pretty crazy.
It's a solution, the cheap solution. It would probably be a real issue for a road bridge.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I'm thinking, I mean, if you have a contact.
I have a contact, I could, uh, cheat an email with his information, for, for expect. Um, I actually have a contact, and I want to go over a few things to terminate this. Brock tells me he's gonna do a permit, contractor, but I need, there's two states going on here, is he, there was a name, and.
That's our, that's how he's been.
I gotta make sure of that, 'cause.
And has he been in touch with the historical, um, association?
I do not know.
That's a question to ask them, because.
'Cause that's a historic bridge, and that's why they want over it.
I understand that, but, okay, so we're, so the historical association will pay them, do we?
Yeah, when I'm talking to people, I was just, okay, they're going over this bridge, every bridge has flats. Now this thing's gonna be ready for a crazy tonnage, duct trail's gonna be shorter, that bridge is gonna flat, and just got slammed on top of that bridge.
I would, I would, I would hope it would be well above.
Well, that's my question, they're saying, I haven't talked to the bridge builder, I've, I've talked to the contractor, and they said it just went over, right on top of it. But I wouldn't think that's.
I would, I would hope that there'd be a space between.
There should be a space.
And, and because, I mean, it's, yeah, I saw television last night where they showed bridges that, that are going like this.
Oh, they're on plenty of bridges in Seattle.
The one in, the one in the Andrews, that we, they built between Salem and the north.
Family Bridge, for a long time.
When they opened that up, Barb and I were out there, and, um, there are, they, they, behind it, and, um, we.
Oh, I feel like, I see them traffic all the time, the truck goes by, and it's like this, like the Tobin Bridge, awesome.
The Tobin, the Tobin Bridge, we don't, we had an engineer tell us that, uh, that, uh, that, that, that's just, let's say.
There's so many bridges that are unsaved right now, down there, crazy.
Yeah, so if you have that information, that's something that we should probably start out with some information for.
Yeah.
If it is that bridge is really, if it's ever coming.
Which one was that?
Long Bridge, Canalus twenty-three.
I think, I think Rose, close to thirty, thirty-one, I think.
The, um, I don't think, the Newbury Bridge was probably, uh, probably, or, it's a kind of, um, twenty-nine, I think it was, it's, it's.
What'd they rate it at?
I believe it was twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Did you wrong?
Yeah.
I didn't, I mean, some of the specs are there, but, um, um, reports will be out, and so.
Oh, hell, did you see the news tonight? The state got rated. Water. The state's water, uh, they, they rated it, uh, I think it was C. Bridges and, uh, roads, B minus, um, go down, it's up.
Oh, B minus?
Friggin', highways, flat highways.
Did you say B minus at all?
D.
Oh, I understood, yeah.
And you're paid.
I, yeah.
Don't wake up now with your name, bro. Don't, put a three on that.
Put it on everyone, it's perfect. President, my, my, I'm like, I said, my brother down in, in Atlanta, when I'm saying that, I tell you, you gonna say that, I'm like.
Anyway, so we, we need to have some, some more conversations.
Yes, yep, absolutely, I'll get you the information the next couple of days, I'll shoot you an email, get some information, see if I can contact him, I gotta talk to him, I gotta get a new plan. I go to Saturday night, I'll get.
Hey, don't we, you better talk to the trainer.
Who?
My dad.
Oh, your dad, the other night?
No.
Well, I don't know, you know, I mean, before you talk to Washington.
I didn't watch, it was news, and, you know, thirteen, I don't know what's, what, uh, what it made me listen to, or whatever, but, yeah.
When he was talking about the long, you know, good long, I'm trying, I'm trying.
As long as, as long as we're communicating, yes.
He was saying that. What was it?
She's dead from a rain, and, no. Yeah, and, you know, he didn't give her fingers, so, I don't, you know, I don't know, I don't know.
I don't know that it's, it's supposed to be, you know. No, Saturday night, you know, he's, he's thinking it's gonna be, I'm learning, I'm told that works more, Saturday night, it's, I didn't wanna. Yeah, no, but now it's kinda like, okay, I know it's, I don't, I don't, somebody says it's right, I go with it, it's nasty.
So we see the, the, we see this opportunity that, it's like hard to say.
I may have, oh, my God, Saturday, maybe.
I know, that was reasonable, it was my thought of the whole thing, but I knew it wasn't a lie. Yeah, I got several letters sent to that.
I saw, I saw, working with my brother last night, and I found you a plan.
Are you gonna listen to it?
I got, I got, I got my three, I got my three year, I got my five year represent, and I'm working on a long journey.
Every single road you need to, and I'll tell you this, I reckon, you know, every single road, you need to, uh, put in your budget, what needs to be done. In the, in the, in the budget.
No.
But you're letting on the dog, what the needs are, because nobody knows. The only thing most of our residents look at is snow, they don't think about the, the summer nations, and what needs to be done.
Yeah.
So, I recommend as well, every single road, you need to, they don't have.
My roads aren't bad, my, my roads aren't bad compared to that.
Oh, that's small, most of them. The only ones that are.
Yeah, I wonder why, the, the roads that I'm putting on my, the roads I'm putting on my, the ones that need like, it's, and they're like, need attention, that's the ones I'm looking for, I'm gonna shave it, but.
I gotta pick, I gotta pick and choose my worst roads.
But you also, you also.
And the worst ones around my house is the worst.
What, how bad the condition was.
You know, like, what you want to start, might, a constructed road, and he probably hear that, but you never doing shoulder work, or just come in, oh, they come in, they're made of bay, okay, we'll pay you right over, you must've. You haven't been shoulder work, so nothing drains on, you know, the road, and you get one, it sits on your bottom, and it's just gonna rot, so what's it gonna do? You know, I, hopefully, I get enough money, I can do what I want, I'm not the dumb next year, I can do what I can regret, but I don't think.
You better do that goddamn cover the wrong way, sure.
I'm talking about, and, and changing the subject, hi, Rose, have you been down my road to see the finished project?
Yeah, I have.
Take it right down there, you'll be amazed that how much that is all done.
Oh, no, I mean, I never saw.
I don't see my sense of staying around.
Just take it right down there, so maybe we have a few minutes, it's, it's unbelievable.